All right. We'll call it be in order. Talk about the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with no doubt, indivisible, and never be in injustice for all.
Reading of the call.
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Trempl County Board of Supervisors will meet at 10:00 a.m. on April 18, 2023, in the county boardroom. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on April 5, 2023, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Severson, County Clerk.
Roll call.
Bridget Turner.
Here.
Stacy Klein.
Here.
Richard Sash.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Here.
David Orsh.
Here.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Here.
Robert Becker.
Present.
Dan Schreiner.
Here.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Here.
Jeanne Nutter.
Here.
Ron Johnson.
Here.
Seventeen and zero.
Cool. Let's see. I certify open meeting law requirements have been met with proper posting and notification. We have eleven item agenda. Somebody want to approve the make a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Doc Sash, second by Mr. Larson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carrie, looking for approval of the minutes.
So approved.
So approved, or you're making a motion to?
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Ms. Nutter, second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's Carrie. Princess, annual report from Human Services. Jay, I think. Oh, Deb is here. I didn't. It's here.
Well, Jay is setting up the PowerPoint. I want to introduce the Human Services staff. We did not call each other today to look like we dressed for a funeral, but appears we did. I'm Deb Zuklam, the Human Services Director, and coming up is Jay Heine, our new deputy director. We have Sandy Polkowski, one of our economic support supervisors, Dana Lee, the other economic support supervisor, which, by the way, is a big deal because in our eighth county consortium, other than La Crosse County, we're the only county that has more than one supervisor. So that says a lot about our staff. We have Deanna Anderson, our Behavioral Health Services Supervisor, Melissa Youngbauer, our ADRC Services Supervisor.
None in black.
Yeah. Partially, I know. She didn't get the memo. She didn't get the memo. And Tia Waldera and Julie White, who both share services for children and families, both child protection as well as services for kids with disabilities. So I'm going to step aside and let this fantastic team do the report.
Good morning, and thank you for letting us share this with you. So this is the 2022 Human Services Annual Report. And just a few notes before we get rolling, because I know you'd rather hear from our experts behind me. But this is what we use to share with our legislators and our citizens to kind of show the scope of what we do as a department. And we've changed our approach a little bit on this annual report because in the past, I think it's been more, we've provided a lot more of facts and figures and things like that, but we want to kind of tell the story a little bit better and share some, kind of this broad scope of what we do. And I don't think people sometimes realize the nature and the scope of what we do. So we are going to, the presentation's a little bit different than the slideshow, but we'll call out the page numbers for you if we bounce around a little bit. We apologize for that. We're going to really do a high-level overview today, and if you want to know more about a topic, you know, we'd certainly be willing to come back and address those, or you can certainly visit with us anytime you like. You're welcome to visit us. So anyway, the first piece that we're going, I'm going to hand it over to Deb to touch on kind of the mission and vision, can't speak this morning, and then kind of the 2022 financials and her message from her letter.
So on the front page of the annual report is our mission and vision. We really want to point out some important words of what we do. Sometimes people don't always understand what does Human Services do, and are you just helping those people? I mean, there are people. A lot of the people that we serve are people that are invisible to all of you. They don't hang out in your social circles. They don't necessarily show up at your churches. They don't show up at your social, or your service clubs. But there are a lot of people in our community who are really depending on the work that our department does and on your support. So our vision, of course, is that we be an innovative leader, working with our partners, recognizing we as Human Services and we as the county can't be everything to everybody. So we work with a lot of partners in our county, and we want all individuals, families, and communities to thrive. Our mission is to really look at motivating positive change. When people come to us, they have a lot going on, and what they're doing isn't always working for them. And so we have to help them through that difficult process of making changes in their life to have better outcomes for themselves and their families. And we value the, our values are listed there, compassion, respect, dignity. In 2022, we added the word excellence. That has been a part of what we do, but we never really verbalized it until we added it this past year. Teamwork, openness, and acceptance. And we have listed our county board members. The next two pages is just our message. You can read that through. I'm not going to bore you with all of that, and much of it will be touched on by reports from the other staff. I'm going to flip to the back page real quick and tell you about the financial piece of it. These are unaudited numbers. The audit may come in slightly different, but this is our best projection at this point. So our revenues, we have a total, we're projecting a total of $8.338 million for our department, of which levy funds 2.173, so about a quarter, a little less than a quarter of what we do. We get a lot of state aids from DCF as Department of Children and Families, DHS as Department of Health Services. We also have services for the elderly and the people with disabilities. More than what we collect in levy, we collect in payments and fees. Much of this is through MA. A lot of our services are for low-income people to getting services for kids with disabilities, adults with disabilities, or individuals struggling with mental illness. And then our department has been very good at getting grants, and so we've got 1.36 million in grants. So our total revenues, as I said earlier, 8.33. Our total expenses was just a little over 8 million. Payroll is a little less than half of it. Most of our money, the majority of our money goes to contracts that we pay organizations in the area to serve individuals for us. And then we have state placements. Those are individuals that have to go to state institutions for services, hopefully for only a short period of time. So we did end up the year with a projected net of about 300,000 is our best guess at this point. The auditors will give you a finer number than that. Human Services has a risk reserve in our human, we have two funds. We have our Human Services Fund and we have our Aging Fund. By statute, they have to be in separate funds. Our Human Services Fund, your resolution allows us to have up to $500,000 in a risk reserve. The reason that has been established, the reason that exists, is because we can't always control placements. If an individual, for example, goes to Winnebago, that's almost $1,700 a night. If we send a child to Chalita, for example, that could cost us over $1,000 a night. And those are, Chalita's oftentimes a longer-term placement. And so those things we can't control, we can't predict. We base our budgets on averages, so that $500,000 sitting there protects the general fund from those ebbs and flows that happen in our department. So we also have, for you to know, for the Senior Nutrition Program, we have another $300,000 set aside for that. We are projecting that in the future, and we've been seeing it, I've been here nearly ten years, we've been seeing a decline in state and federal funds for that program, but we know with the aging baby boom, the demand's going up, revenues are going down. So we've been very proactive with the board, and we were able to set aside $300,000 to be there to help fill that gap, so we don't have to put seniors on waiting lists for senior nutrition programs. And I know that's near and dear to Jeanne's heart. She's fought hard for that.
No waiting list for food.
So that's our financial report, our best projection for 2022, and the cool stuff that we do with this money, you'll hear now.
Hi, I'm Deanna Anderson, and I'm the Behavioral Health Supervisor. So much of, or everything that we provide in that unit has to, statutorily falls under Chapter 51, which is the Behavioral Health Services.
Page eight.
Service array. So I have six staff in my unit, mostly behavioral health, social workers that work with our community support program, our comprehensive community services program, the social worker case manager that deals with the commitments for both mental health and alcohol and other drug abuse, a social worker that provides the coordination of the adult protective services and guardianships and protective placements, a social worker who also has AODA counselor's licensure, who is our recovery court coordinator, and then we have a behavioral health registered nurse that provides services for the community support program, and then one behavioral health technician that does all kinds of things for all of us in our unit. The services that are listed up there are, some of them are provided services. The staff that I mentioned actually provide the services, and some of them are contracted. The provided, the services that we provide are the community support program, the comprehensive community services program. We do outreach for individuals in the early stages of determining what programs are appropriate. We have our recovery court program. We do the intoxicated driver program assessments, which is something new that we began doing in 2022, prevention, the APS, Adult Protective Services Investigation, and then the coordination of all of the involuntary services, the 51 commitments. The services that we contract for are prevention, one of which was, we had a prevention contract with someone who went in and did like 150 hours of services to 942 kindergarten through fifth graders in the Gaal etrick Tremplow School District. Those were the kinds of prevention activities that we contracted for. We contract for crisis intervention. There were 405 crisis contacts in 2022. We contract for inpatient services, the hospitals, residential services for both mental health and alcohol and other drug abuse, outpatient services, and just intake assessments where they may go to a psychologist or a provider to just be assessed to help us determine the services that they need. I guess that, we're supposed to keep it down to as short as possible. So those are, those are kind of generally what our, my staff does. I guess the only other thing would be is the balance that we have in my unit is that services we provide are either voluntary or involuntarily, involuntary. And so there's times where a lot of times, community and family really are asking us to help with someone who is struggling, and we try to do that involuntarily. We have lots of really neat programs for that, but if the individual is not willing to accept them, we have to wait until this level is reached on the involuntary level, which is the commitment level. And that can sometimes be frustrating for both our department and the people that are trying to get help, you know, for their family members.
So I'm Sandy, one of the economic support supervisors, and Dana's here with me. We take team here in Trempl County, and then we also provide supervision. I go to Pepin County, Dana goes to Buffalo County, and then we have staff that we supervise across the eight counties. So our economic support unit here in Trempl County has seven ES staff. We're part of the eighth county consortium called the Western Region for Economic Assistance. So in 2022, the ES unit provided financial support to impacted families via food share assistance, medical assistance, and childcare assistance to our residents in Trempl County who were determined eligible. On average, one in six residents in Trempl County receive a form of one or more of our programs that we administer. And this is, okay, Jay has got it pulled up. Perfect. I was going to say we're on 11 and 12 in the annual report. So in 2022, $7,276,129 were issued in food share benefits to recipients. $53,736,789 were paid out to Medicaid recipients here in Trempl County, and on average, $26,572.79 was paid out on a monthly average to our childcare assistance families.
And I just want to point out some of the highlights or successes and achievements of economic support in the past year, one of them being the longevity of the workers in our unit. We had two economic support staff members be recognized for their use of service with Trempl County, Sandy Polkowski for 25 years and Maria Rivera for 15 years. In addition, in 2022, economic support had made a big transition to DHS's new training program, and with that, our consortium was able to successfully cross-train our staff for multiple programs to improve our customer service for our agency. So that was a pretty big deal for us. And finally, in the past year, our consortium has maintained a very high level of accuracy for our benefit issuance, including no remands for our case appeals. So what this means is when an individual disagrees with the agency actions for the benefit issuance, they have the ability to appeal that decision. And as of the end of the year last year, the administrative law judges have ruled in favor of our agency for all of these case appeals. So that was pretty neat, too. Despite all the challenges of COVID in 2022, we had a pretty successful year in economic support.
So I don't have any notes, so I'm just going to wing it, but what page of the annual report are we on? Page 13. One thing on the slide that is not on there is that Tia and I also supervise children's CCS services. So comprehensive community services is a behavioral health service that was, is also under Deanna for adults, but we do the children's piece. I currently supervise three ongoing child protection staff, three children's CCS staff, three school social workers, with the possible addition of one more because that partnership has been so successful. Oh, fantastic. So we'll have four school social workers. We do a partnership, a shared model with schools in the county. And then I also supervise two, like youth justice, they work with our juveniles. One is under a youth diversion grant. I think we're in year three of a five-year grant, and the other is our YJ worker. So just a couple of highlights or points I wanted to make sure that everyone understands. The state has an initiative called Families First that we operate under with all of our children's child protection and child welfare services, in which we are mandated or required to try to keep children in home as much as possible. So they have given funds for us to try to support families in ways like maybe helping with rent payments, or helping with utility payments, or car repairs, or things like that to help keep families stable and children in home. So that kind of service requires a lot more intensive case management. So our ongoing social workers in CPS are in home a lot more frequently, having eyes on kids to make sure they're safe. We're also trying to tackle the truancy problem, which is not just our county, it's nationwide as, I think, as a direct result of COVID, but we have some collaborative efforts happening with other counties in our region and statewide as well to try to get a handle on the truancy issue following COVID. I think one of the things that I would like to see my youth justice workers do in the next year is try to, I'm sending them to some trainings to learn how to do some interventions that are more like correctional-based, that we can do in-house instead of having contracted providers do those. So we're going to be trying to expand some of our youth justice services for our delinquent kids out there. Yeah, I think that's about it. Couple of cool, oh, I also, one more thing I wanted to say, we have, I'm so proud of our staff. So I don't know how many of you have experience in the child protection or youth justice world, but we are on-call 24/7. We're required to have someone available to assist or to respond, and we have, between Tia and myself, have staff that are amazing and never complain. So we can get calls on a Sunday afternoon, or a holiday, or 2:00 in the morning. If there is a present danger identified, we are required to respond that same day, and we have staff that do that every single day. So we don't get calls every day, but they are on-call every day. So I'm just super proud of the dedication of our CPS staff. So I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that.
Hi, I am Tia Waldera. So me and Julie kind of co-partner supervising all of the children's programs. And so I currently supervise the Bertha Three Coordinator, one that we have in our, in my unit. I supervise two children's long-term support workers, and then I have two program aides that work under me. They help provide just overall help to the units. They help supervise visits for families that have their children out of their home. They help do drug testing for us and overall help in the office to make sure our units are running okay. One of the program aides is also our kinship coordinator, which I'll talk about here in a little bit. I have a foster care coordinator, and then I have four child protection investigators. And so kind of going off of what Julie said, our investigators are the first ones to respond to a child abuse and neglect report. So in 2022, we had 157 screen-in reports, which means we had 157 cases that our four investigators went out on and assessed for child safety. Our, going along with the Families First initiative through the state, our foster care coordinator has been working more licensing relatives than they have just generalized foster homes, which is really great because we're getting more relatives licensed to provide care for their relatives rather than having them in a stranger's home. However, we still have, I believe, about 13 foster homes licensed in Trempl County. And then our kinship coordinator is the one that works with voluntary kinship, so the families that are caring for their relatives on a voluntary basis. They fill out an application for us, and then we assess the home for safety and provide them with funds to take care of their relatives. Just a note on the CLTS program, so the children's long-term support. I have one full-time CLTS worker and then another full-time CLTS worker that also does CCS. But in 2022, we had an increase of 93% in that unit, and we've also had two other workers from Julie's unit that have provided CLTS case management as well. However, so with COVID-19, all children that apply for CLTS and have a disability are deemed eligible, so we had a significant increase in 2022. With COVID unwinding in 2023, we may see a decrease in those services because of the eligibility component of that program. Yeah, I think that's all. Thank you.
I am Melissa Youngbauer, and I am the supervisor at the Aging and Disability Resource Center. So I supervise nine full-time staff. I also supervise seven part-time nutrition and transportation staff. So I'm so pleased to say we had a great year in 2022. We provided more core services than ever before from, with the ADRC. We did this through one of our primary goals is really to get out and raise awareness of the programs and services that the ADRC provides. So we did this through four strategies, really. We launched our new Facebook page, which was designed to create awareness and education. And so if you've not checked out our Facebook page, I would encourage you to do so. We also significantly increased our newsletter distribution. We also did a lot of outreach. And so we got out and we had a very planned and meaningful presence in all of the communities throughout the county. We got out and just really hit the pavement and touched more people than we've ever done before. We met with people at many different places, including our meal sites and many other locations. We also got creative and developed just terrific new partnerships with a lot of different kinds of organizations. We partnered and collaborated with businesses, individuals, places of worship, community centers, school districts, even colleges, libraries, healthcare providers, and even more. So those partnerships, again, allowed us to just really talk about our mission and let people know what we do. We also were able to address some of our county's concerns with social isolation and loneliness. So we were able to provide opportunities for socialization and community activities that really helped create our community and make our community a better place for us all to live. So lastly, I did want to just touch on how important our volunteers are to the mission and the work that the ADRC does. In fact, we wouldn't be able to do all the great work that our ADRC does if it wasn't for the volunteers. In 2022, we worked with more than 50 volunteers, and we estimate that they performed over 5,000 hours of community service. So why is that important? Well, we all benefit from what our volunteers do. We know that there are such just terrific benefits for the volunteers themselves, of course, but we also know that our consumers also greatly benefit from their experiences. We've got some volunteers actually in our room today. So Dawn just recently started delivering meals, so I just want to point, yeah, yes. And we're very, very proud of, one of the things that we started just in the last year or so was just some really great intergenerational activities that are taking place throughout our county, which are really providing some joy and some meaningful connections. So another thing to just note is those volunteers are saving our county a lot of money, right? It's a lot of work, 5,000 hours, that are being done. So the need for volunteers remains critically high. So if any of you are interested in volunteering, or you might know some individuals or businesses, others that might be interested, send them our way.
We're serious about the volunteers. We really need the help. So an hour a week, if you can, even do that much, we'd love the help. I do want to point out a couple of quick things. We have great staff, but we have an award-winning staff. Mark Raskowski, who's one of our lead children and families, social workers, recently got an award from the Department of Children and Families, and so I didn't drag him here because we dragged him to Human Services Board, and that was enough torture. But two of our staff standing here today just got an award last week. They drove up to St. Paul to get an award from Winona State as a community partner, recognized by Winona State. Tia Waldera was recognized for her work with student interns, and Melissa was recognized for her work with the Bridges Program, bringing health services to the community. So it's a big deal. These are great staff, and people are recognizing that around the state. So I just want to say thank you, you guys. I want to say a huge thank you to Jay for putting all this together. He didn't say a lot, but he did the majority of the work to put this together. One of our unit supervisors isn't here, is Kelly Swett. She's our new fiscal manager, but she's also doing her old job before she can move into that job, so she's kind of wearing two hats at the same time, so she wasn't here. But I do want to recognize that five of these individuals here, as well as Kelly, have moved up from within the department to becoming a unit supervisor. That says a lot about the quality of our staff. It also says they want to work with me, so that makes me feel good. But we really have great staff, and we have opportunities for staff to move up in our organization. I'm super proud of that. And I also want to make sure that I thank the Human Services Board. They've done tremendous work through 2022 and continue to do great work, and I want to thank all of you because we couldn't do this without your support. So I want to say thank you to all of you. Jay's got a few quick words.
I just wanted to close by once again inviting you folks to come and talk with us or visit with us, visit any of our, with our unit supervisors, visit the ADRC, and volunteer, just like Dawn and a number of other folks who are doing as well. So please come see us, ask us questions. If you have more questions down the road about any, any of the programs that operate under Human Services, we'd love to come back and talk a little bit more in-depth. I know this was a pretty high-level overview of things, and so we're trying to cram a lot into a short period of time, but please let us know if you'd like to hear more about any of the programs, but we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. First of all, I want to thank Deb for the great job you're doing. So you're thanking everybody else, and I want to thank you for what you've done, okay? But I do want to point out, I want to ask a question, and I think this is probably one of the better times to do this. Who, who works with children the most or a lot, or that I can ask a question when it comes to kids reading? Or that I can ask a question when it comes to kids reading books and things? I know we don't have a lot to do with schools, but I do want to bring this out. They had a meeting in the Holman School District yesterday, at a school board meeting, about a book that is actually in our schools. And I think reading books for children, what you guys are doing to try to get them in the right direction, that we got to really watch what kind of books they're reading. So I'm going to just, I want to throw a book out there. I'm not going to say the name of the book, but this book is in our, in Hol, right now in Holman Junior High, sixth grade to eighth grade. And they're, the librarian from G E T is thinking about putting in our school, sixth grade. Right now, it's in high school. Okay, so I'm going to keep the word down, but I'm going to use the abbreviation of the word so you understand it. So right now, in this book, the word "F," you know the word, appears 10 times. The word "effing" appears eight times. The word "dick" appears three times. The word "dickheads" appear two times. The word, the S-word appears two times. Also, the A S S-word appears several times. And there's a lot of, and this is a graphic book. So there's a lot of sexuality between two partners, two boys, that are graphic inside this book. If kids at, say, six years old grabs onto this book because it's graphic, and they, and in that meeting, they wanted to point out that kids like graphics. They don't, they can't swear to the teachers, but if they want to swear between each other, that's their choice. And we, we're okay with that as long as it ain't swearing. So this kind of stuff was brought out. So they did approve it, keeping the book in the Holman Junior High, but from vote five to one. So I just want to point that out to where I know we can't control our libraries in our schools, but maybe as a county, as social workers, that we can put some information out there saying, and this is my feeling, I don't know what anybody else feels about this kind of stuff going to a sixth grader, put some information out there saying that these aren't really possibly the books that our kids shouldn't be reading to influence them by any means that direction. So I wanted to point that out. I mean, I thought this was probably a great meeting that you guys are up here seeing this, and you work with so many children and so many families, that I just don't think our county should be seeing this.
Well, we work with a lot of kids, obviously. As you said, we don't control what kind of books they read or what kind of books the schools have. Since I'm new member on the La Crosse School Board, that's going to be a different headache for a different day, but that's a different hat. Careful what you ask for. You just might get it. So in the business, though, that we are in, and I, and I want to make sure I point this out, around this table, there are many different opinions about the LGBTQ plus population. And our job is not to encourage or discourage anyone from that. Those are very personal decisions between the individuals and their families. And so as the families present to us as what they say they are, that's the way we serve them. But again, going back to our core values, we treat everyone with respect and dignity. And again, we don't encourage anything. We don't discourage, again, if that's the, if that's what their preference is. And I also want to point out, I think part of what you have in your, what you're pointing out is a lot of the young people we taught work with, particularly in Julie's area with the juveniles, we work really hard about teaching them respect because sometimes they haven't seen that in their lives. And a lot of those kids end up in court, and they don't even know how to behave in court. And so Julie and her staff spend a lot of time about teaching them about appropriate language when you're talking to adults, appropriate language in court. So we do a lot of that work with, with our young people. I hope that kind of answers your, your questions.
I just want to put it on your radar what's, you know, what's out there for our kids.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Good to see you here. Just going to take a few minutes to go through some progress photos. I've continued to meet with property. They thought it would be a good idea to give you an update on how the project is moving along. And I thought the best way to do that would be to give you some quick progress photos. So the Justice Center is on track to, to be completed the end of October. We are on schedule. We do have one contractor that has asked for an extension of time, our electrical contractor, but we have rejected that claim, and we're working through those details. Other than that, this October, end of October date for substantial completion, we're still on track to attain that. What substantial completion means to you is that the building will be done. If you walk in there, it'll be completed. Occupancy date will have to be determined once we work with, through the department. So what happens when you deal with a correctional facility is once you get to the point of substantial completion, there is a phase called shakedown. What that means is that the sheriff and his staff actually occupy the jail and the security areas to make sure that all of the bugs are worked out. What that equates to can be anywhere from six to 12 weeks, where it's a dry run, so to speak, where the policy has been written, the jail is being functioned, all intercoms, all locks, all doors. Everything is functioned for a period of time with their staff through a training efforts before inmates are moved into that jail. So that work would start at end of October. So we need to work with the sheriff. We need to work with the judge in regards to what areas and when they would be open to the community, because I know that's a question from the group. So we're working through the details on that. But you can see that the, the project is progressing very well. Secondly, the follow-up phase to that project is obviously the renovation of portions of this project. Property did move forward with us entering into a design phase for the balance of this existing courthouse. We are currently in that design process. We have met with all but three departments so far to, to finalize a layout for their space. Once the layout is finalized, then we'll be moving into design development and construction documents, which is all the mechanical, electrical finishes, all sorts of things. We're targeting to have that, those construction documents completed by fall so that we can bid it out, have a number that's brought back to you for the renovation. It's our intention to bid that out into phases so that you can pick and choose the cost and the, the depth of work that you want to do with that renovation. But that's on track as well. So that's kind of an update in regards to the overall schedule and progress. Do want to show you some photos here. So if those of you that haven't seen it, this is the, the architecture rendering of what the new front entrance would look like at the security desk. And as you can see, we've got some progress photos here. We do post these on the website if you get a chance to look at that, the trumpolojusticecenter.com. There are progress photos that are there. We do our best to update those weekly. Sometimes they're bi-weekly, but you will see more photos than this. I had them nab about 15, 20 photos that would show you some progress that's being done here. So you can see, and I'm sure when you drove up, the building has progressed substantially in regards to enclosure and the roof and all of the components that are tied in with the facility there. Just some different views. We've got some drone images here that show that exterior brick that's being installed around the building. There are some areas of the building that are going to be a brick finish. There are some areas of the building that are going to be a metal wall panel, so there's some accents, and you'll see that as we travel around the building here. Again, this is the south face of the, of the campus here, which would be the new front door, the new parking lot, the new entrance. This is on the north side of the campus, the QuickTrip side, so to speak. I think everybody knows where that's at. That's progressing as well with the brick. You can see where the plywood there, that's where the metal panel accent will be. And then obviously the court suite that's off to the right. These are the clear story windows. You may wonder what those angled roofs are that are up in there. We wanted to get some natural light into the courtrooms. So these two areas here are providing natural light. And they're providing natural light from the north side to eliminate or minimize the glare that's going to be on some of the screens for presentations and exhibits that would happen in the court space, as well as security for the courtrooms so that there is still natural light, but we provide security in the courtrooms. Got exterior windows being installed around the campus. You can see that there are, there's equipment that's being put in place into the kitchen. Kitchen hoods are installed. We've got ductwork, and all of the air handling units are in place. Those are being connected as we speak. There's more mechanical pictures here of the hot water tanks. The wires are being pulled. There is a lot of wire that's being pulled into that facility. So, and you understand, in a, in a correctional facility, we've got cameras, we've got intercoms, we've got multiple things that are being connected in regards to the control of the jail. You can see the electrical room. Switchgear has been set. Tile is actually installed here in that kitchen area and into the freezers and coolers that are in there. Sheet rock up on second floor is being hung, framed up into that courtroom space. You can see as that sheet rock is being hung in the jail. Doors are actually swinging. The frames are set. There's some painting of walls. So finishes are underway into the jail pod. And then this is master control as we are getting that ready to get it painted as well. So if you, if you would take a tour through there, I think it would surprise you as to the progress that's being done. There are finishes at multiple, multiple levels in there, flooring and finishes that are tied into that. And things are moving along well. There's been a fair amount of people. I'm sure you've probably seen it with the vehicles around the campus. Depends on the day, but there's anywhere from 75 to 100 tradespeople that are working on that campus right now, and that number will probably be pretty consistent until we wrap up the job in the, in October. So any questions? Clear as mud? All right. Thank you.
Sorry, Note Series 2023A. And I'm just going to read that now therefore be resolved by the County Board of Supervisors of the county that you ratify the notice of sale and offering materials and award the notes. How's that for short? Oh, golly.
Do you want me to read it again?
Yes.
Oh, nuts. Okay. This is a resolution awarding the sale. I'm sorry, I didn't turn my mic on. Resolution awarding the sale of $4,265,000 general obligation promissory note series 2023A and now therefore be resolved by the County Board of Supervisors of the county that you ratify the notice of sale and offering materials and award the notes.
We do have Brian Riley here. Any questions? I was told the interest rate on this was 2.9 something, which is actually pretty good.
They've got it on their desks.
Oh, they do have it?
You all have it on your desk. You have the reports.
It is quite reasonable, yes.
Any questions at all? Brian?
Well, he's got some talking.
You got something that you want to?
I'm happy to give a very high-level overview. I know we've had a number of various discussions. A lot of it was around planning, and now we are at the finish line with this particular debt issue. And so it might also be helpful for some of you that perhaps have not gotten to this point just to kind of get a, take a step back and get more of a, a profile of how these sorts of things happen, the nuts and bolts aspects, without getting too far in the weeds, right? So.
Just to be legal, I suppose I better get a motion in a second so we can discuss this.
Sure.
Motion by Ms. Turner to approve. Second by Ms. Turner.
All right. I'll, I'll continue, and if there are questions along the way, you don't need to wait until I'm done. In fact, you won't know when I'm going to be done, so you might as well just ask them as you, as you have them. I'm, I'm happy to work through the board chair as far as the, the orderliness of, of the meeting so it doesn't turn into chaos. But in any event, if you recall, a lot of the effort really goes into the planning side of things. We had various discussions. We met with the exec finance committee a number of times to understand more of, on a forward-looking basis, what might be kind of the, the tenor of any potential borrowing for capital projects going forward. And there was some uncertainty there as far as the various departments. So we did kind of identify a couple of different scenarios. What if, I, I would say was the, the order of business there. And so what if we took this stance? What if we looked like this going forward? To try to get a sense as to, in a larger scheme of capital planning and financing, what would be the impacts associated with that? What kind of outcomes would that group want to see? And potentially have identified the size and structure of this issue, understanding that you did approve some things in the capital budget, and we also married that up with an initial resolution for borrowing. That was step one from the board's perspective and governance, is that this group did, I believe unanimously approved the initial resolution that essentially authorizes the county to proceed with financing of the projects identified in the capital budget. So over the course of a number of months, we went through that exercise. We came to you, talked through some of the bits and pieces of that, and certainly afforded everyone the opportunity to ask questions, to get a little higher level of insight, and also obviously to express opinions. This is a very important aspect of what all of you do as a board. Debt is one of the only things that one board can bind another to, right? This is irrevocable in its nature. You have pledged your unlimited taxing authority, your full faith and credit, which means from any available source. And so ultimately, every board in the future will have to include the levy amounts in the budget, all right? And there is no path towards revoking the levy after this would be approved, all right? So again, that's a very powerful pledge. It's also why you get 2.9% interest rate, because the investors understand that as well. So it's a, it's a very strong credit. As we're working behind the scenes, a lot of things are unfolding. You are accessing the securities market when you're issuing debt in this fashion. There's a number of different ways to get capital. You can certainly go to banks. You've done that and done commercial loans, essentially. They're still called bonds or notes under law. It doesn't make any real difference where the money comes from. You still work under the same sections of statute. So we have access bank financing when that has been the appropriate method. And part of our role is to help you identify where the markets are at, where our banks lending at, where are the capital markets, the securities markets, what rates are out there, compare and contrast, how much are the fees here, how much are the fees there? We represent your interests in all of that. And so we help you compare and contrast once some decisions have been made, not just the planning aspect. So in the current environment, the securities markets are where the most attractive financing terms, most specifically interest rates, are at. Banks tend to kind of work around the, the short spectrum of the interest rate, maturity, you know, the dynamic in terms of how they get funding, right? And so short-term rates are actually fairly high right now. And so a lot of banks get funding through that environment, and so they price off of that, whereas the security markets are much different. You have individual investors. You have institutional investors. All of them have different motivations. But that tends to be right now for a strong credit like yourself to get the best interest rates, which bears out, which we'll talk about here in a moment. So behind the scenes, we're preparing documents with your staff and with what's referred to as your bond attorney. This is your counsel that is engaged by you but specializes in public finance, in both bond financing, and these also happen to be, this is tax-exempt debt. So if any of, if any of us were to own all or some of this, the interest that we could pay would be free from federal income taxation. And so there's a litany of rules you have to follow to be able to achieve that status. And so they are also experts in tax matters. And so they give you opinions on both the validity that you did all the things under law that you need to do to validly issue these notes, as well as the fact that they comply with all the rules associated with tax-exempt status. And so a lot of that is going on while you're obviously doing other things. But just to give you a sense as to how that happens, a securities offering document is prepared. It goes out to the marketplace. There's a number of different ways to sell your obligations as securities in the capital markets. When you've got a pretty straightforward transaction, I'll say, this is general obligation debt. Like I said, a pledge of your full faith and credit on unlimited taxing authority, and you also have a fairly strong rating. We view that as being quite favorable for your ability to access capital. And so like a lot of aspects of what you do as a county, we essentially put this together and we put it out to bid, to purchasers, all right? And so we establish parameters for the bid, just like you would with a construction project or, or if you're buying equipment, so that the folks that are going to be out there in the markets that have interest in buying your bonds to sell them to investors, so they understand what the protocols are and how, what's the basis of award, those sorts of things, right? And so yesterday at noon, best and final bids were due. You can certainly come in earlier. Could certainly come in earlier. And so, what you're seeing in front of you is really a summary of what transpired yesterday. After we give basically verbal, we facilitate all of that on your behalf, so those bids are all electronic. There's not people, you know, on phones like in a trading pit or anything, so it's very orderly. And so, yesterday, those bids did come in. We tabulate them. Any adjustments that are needed on the day of the actual sale, we worked through that with both your staff and the bond attorney, all in an effort to get final documents in front of you as a board. So, on the agenda today is a resolution that if approved would establish a binding purchase and sale agreement between you and the underwriter of the notes. Essentially, you're locked in, and then we close the beginning of May, so that you will have full funding of all the projects that are being financed by the notes. And so, first payment would be due next year, so as you go through the budget process, you set your levy. The payments that are going to be due in '24 will be a part of your levy then going forward, all right? Maybe I'll just pause quickly and see if there are any questions, otherwise I will walk you through the, what I'll call the executive summary. All right. Very good. We got the logistical things out of the way. And so, to the point that was made earlier, I think you did very well. You know, typically you've received anywhere from four to, I want to say, eight or ten bids. As you can imagine, just like anything else, this is kind of a volume business for bond dealers, right? So, when we sold forty-three million dollars in bonds for the Justice Center, there was a higher level of interest, because they're spending the same amount of time, right, in terms of looking at your transaction, getting it approved by their compliance department, their salespeople are out there talking to investors. So, there's a higher level of attraction towards a larger issue, because there are more dollars available in terms of overall fees, even if it's a lower percentage, it still generates more dollars. So, we've had, four to six has been about the norm when you've been in that kind of four to six million dollar range. If you go back even further, I think 2015, some healthcare center financing that was in the neighborhood of twenty-five-ish, twenty-seven million, you know, that's when you start to see that more six to eight profile. But, we got a good representation from the marketplace, not just the Midwest, but even East Coast here, too. So, all told, we got four bids. The best came in at around two point nine percent, as was stated. There is a fairly widespread between best and worst, with the best being about two point nine and the worst being at three and a half. So, to me, what that says is we got value out of the competitive sale or the buy-bid approach, because on any given day, as you can imagine, one dealer has a higher level of interest than another. They carry inventory, just like a car dealer carries inventory. And if you're running out of it, you want more of it, right, because you want to serve your customers. And so, we can't know that on any given day, right? And so, we want to attract the widest audience possible. In this case, we had great interest from TD Securities out of New York, who did provide the best bid. After we get that, then, we run numbers, just as you can imagine, and we go from the preliminary size and structure, and we take estimated pricing on your obligations, and then we have actuals. And so, we'll take, you know, maybe thirty minutes to an hour to kind of walk through that. So, in this case, at the same amount of notes, four million two sixty-five, because we do establish budgets for certain things, specifically fees and expenses, we were able to garner about fifty-five thousand dollars of additional dollars for projects. That happens to be maybe a little more than one percent of the total issue size, but at favorable rates such as this, you know, I argue that's certainly in your interest to retain those dollars. Everything costs more these days, and so, there's no need to obviously go through the process of borrowing again for something like fifty thousand dollars can be prohibitive. So, all told, we arrived at debt service that very much approximated the original estimates that we had going back a number of months. If you can recall, I presented to you a pre-sale report that largely lays out very similar things, but all of that is preliminary in nature and based upon interest rates in the marketplace at that time. None of us have control over that. They do move up and down. In this case, we were pretty stable over the last few months. There's been a little bit of a downward trajectory in rates, and I think to some degree, that was a net benefit to you. So, I would say, all told, you got very good results from what we've been seeing in the market. Two point nine percent is very solid for five-year money, and as you can kind of walk through the bid tabulation, you'll actually see rates decline from the first year to the last, and they're all kind of right around two point seven, two point eight percent, but it's a little bit of an odd environment where, say, one-year money is actually more expensive for you than, say, three to five-year money, but that's the world we live in presently. And so, I'm happy to walk through any, some of the technical aspects. I was hoping to kind of walk you through a little bit of the rating as well, because I think that's important for you to understand how third parties view you from a credit perspective as well. So, maybe I'll just take a pause here for a moment, see if there are any questions related to the notes themselves or anything that I have just discussed.
Got a question. Just looking at the numbers, if you can explain how this all works. So, if it's saying promissory notes amount not to exceed four point three million on the resolution, so then how does this fit in here? Is this all before we factor in the interest, just the principal, or how does that work with the numbers?
So, the initial resolutions authorize a maximum principal amount, and so, if you're going to exceed that, we basically have to start that process over and get at least a three-quarters vote of the county board to proceed. And so, we work essentially within those confines. That does not include the interest, so just the principal amount alone. So, total principal and interest really is not something that's addressed under any kind of statutory authorizations. In your case, we arrived at very much, very close to the same number that we started. That's not by, you know, because we planned it that way, right? That's just kind of where the interest rate markets have been, and they've been pretty stable. So, you'll have to tell me if I answered your question or if you want me to go into any further detail. I think you're looking at both the preliminary official statement, I'm guessing. Oh, you've got a resolution in draft form?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
So, the resolution that you have is draft in nature, and so, it gets completed on the day of, which makes it difficult to put into your packets. So, you receive the draft resolution in advance. There's probably blanks in it in a number of places. So, when we get to done, essentially, right, we get all the bids in, we do all of that kind of resizing and structuring with the actual pricing information and all of the actual fees, then the bond attorney takes the reports that we generate, and then they populate all those blank spaces with the actual numbers. So, you have the actual resolution, just from a timeliness perspective and the fact that it's like thirty pages long, you end up typically with the draft.
It is in your electronic packet, so I have the completed one.
Oh, the updated numbers.
Yep, with the numbers.
And I think that's where I was kind of just...
I can understand that. So, that was, yep, that was transmitted mid to late afternoon yesterday. Again, the sale, the sale time, bids due was at noon, and so it typically takes a couple hours to get to the end result of being able to provide the final reports to the bond attorney to complete the resolution. But, it is in its final form, and that is what you are considering. Everything that's in the shorter handle will match with the final resolution. All right. I'll move on quickly to the rating report, and so, as you do, if you're scanning over that, looking through it, there wasn't an extensive conversation around much other than the budget, I would say. And so, you will note that you retained your same rating, double A minus, but there is a negative outlook, and that is, in my opinion, entirely related to some declines in fund balance that have occurred through drawing it down for budgetary purposes, and I'd say you're probably at a point where they're going to be paying a lot of attention to how you handle your fund balance going forward. And so, there are some thresholds that the rating agencies look at. They're very statistics-driven, so ratios, things of that nature. There's a table in there, which I'm happy to walk you through any of those details, but it sets out all of the metrics that they're going to typically look at from the local economy, in your case, countywide, and even surrounding areas. They even look at you kind of a bit as an extension of the kind of Eau Claire metropolitan area, given your proximity, you know, wealth indices, demographics, things of that nature. What's the total value of the county? What's the debt, total debt in relationship to total value? How much are you levying to service your debt? You know, all those things are kind of, didn't change a whole lot from the last time we spoke with them. The only distinction is that in the last two budgets, there's been some appropriation of your accumulated dollars from fund balance, which is not uncommon, so I don't want you to think like that's punitive, but they view your fund balance as a primary area of credit in terms of strength, or in this case, potentially some declines into that strength. And so, naturally, as they look forward in time, you're living under the regime of levy limits, right? And you can only increase so much from year to year, and you don't have a lot of discretion in that regard. So, if you're supplementing your budget with available cash resources, that's not an unending supply of available resources for budgetary purposes. And so, going forward, they're going to have those sorts of questions for you in terms of how you're looking at your budget, what sort of flexibility you have on the expense side, what is your allowable levy by way of levy limits looking like, and how you're going to handle the overall budget going forward. So, everything else largely looks very, very similar from last year's, both call with them and the way it shows up in the report. The statistics don't change much, other than, say, fund balance as a percent of your overall expenditures has declined, because you've used some of it for budgetary purposes.
Go ahead.
Could you explain to me the re-offering premium we're seeing in the summary of sales results?
I am happy to, yes. That, you'll have to forgive me, because it's kind of nerdy to talk about bond math and things of that nature, but I live and breathe it, so I think I can put it to you in layman's terms or layperson's terms, but think of it this way, right? There are bonds that are out there in the market that have already been issued. They have interest rates attached to them, so if you want to go buy one, you pay a certain price for it. It can be more or less than face value. And so, when that bond was issued, it was at a certain interest rate. The market is changing all the time, right? Interest rates are going up, they're going down. So, when a particular bond was issued, it may have a three percent coupon or a rate attached to it. That's how much interest you earn as the holder of it. If rates go up to five percent, that bond is way less attractive, right, than bonds that are issued now. And so, I'm actually going to pay less for it than the one that's yielding five percent. And so, you have this adjustment going on. So, when you have a, the rate is the rate of interest that the county pays to the holder of the obligation. What's your cost of money is the two point eight percent, and how does that happen is the purchaser is paying you more than face value. And so, when we put out a new issue, we give the underwriter or the purchaser the ability to put the coupons on it that they want. We can put restrictions on it, but the more restrictions you put on something, the less attractive it becomes, and so there's always some declining value in how tightly you wind things. So, we could tell them, you can't put anything more than a three on there. Well, they're going to say, my customers want higher coupons for certain reasons, which I'll go into, and they'll say, well, I don't want that one, I'll go buy another one. There's a lot of other ones out there, so we want to have the widest audience possible. So, it's fairly common right now to get higher coupons, but these nice yields. And so, when your coupon exceeds the yield, they have to pay you more than face value. So, whereas at maturity, let's say a bond is a thousand dollars. You're going to get, if I'm an investor, I'm going to get back my thousand dollars at maturity, but when I buy it at new issue, I'm paying like eleven hundred dollars for that thousand-dollar bond. So, I started out at eleven hundred, but I'm only going to get a thousand back. That five percent of interest is going to be more than the hundred dollars, right? So, I'm still going to get, they're going to earn two point eight percent, because they're paying more than face value and getting face value back at the end. So, if you think about it, I'm getting like a capital loss over time, but I'm getting a very high stream of income that's overcoming that. Why people want that is because we're in a low-rate environment, and if interest rates go up, the value of existing bonds goes down. The higher the coupon, the more durable the price is. The price, so if I've got a three percent coupon and a five percent coupon, and they otherwise look exactly the same, if interest rates go up one percent, the three percent coupon bond is going to go down in price further than the five percent coupon bond, because it's got a higher stream of income attached to it. And so, when you add up all of the amounts in excess of face value on all of the individual maturities, that's the re-offering premium. So, if you look at, you're issuing four million two sixty-five. The price that you're being paid is four million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. You're getting more than face value at the time you issue the debt. And so, there are positives and negatives to all of this in your particular circumstance. We want to get the most, the widest audience possible, which hopefully then results in the lowest interest rate to you. So, we didn't really have a need to, this is obviously what you rely on us on. We didn't have a need to restrict the couponing, which we can do, and so we give them the freedom to bid how they want, with whatever interest rates they want to attach. What matters most to all of you is the two point eight percent, the two point seven, six percent, and so on and so forth, right? And that, when you blend all that together with the purchaser's fee, it's two point nine percent. That's what matters most to you. But, yes, it is confusing to look at that and have an understanding of what does that really mean, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So, we have a motion in a second?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think, before we proceed to vote, I think we should have the purpose of this note read into the record, for the sake of those who may be listening or watching.
Automobiles and roadwork, basically.
Right, right. I should have written that down. Bridges were...
It was four million to the highway, right?
A little more than that.
Four point five, that's four point five highways.
Well, that's what the yield is on it right now, but to make up our four, four, six, five, I got that.
I can pick the numbers out of here if you'd like me to say it all loud.
I know, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so...
Three point eight, isn't it?
The end result is for highway projects, basically roads and bridges, right? You've got four million fifty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars for project costs. For equipment, you've got a hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, that's public safety equipment. Do note that the resolution itself will recite the very detailed specifics regarding the initial authorization and the purposes you're borrowing for, as well as how much is going to each. I recognize everybody's not going to read that, so those are the numbers and what you're borrowing for.
Can I answer your question?
So, you prorated that, I want to call it the premium, the extra fifty, fifty-five?
We had to do that, yes.
Yes, okay, that's...
Okay. I have a motion in a second. You want to call or roll?
I will do that. Lori Severson. Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Paulman.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller. David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richards Asia.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, environmental land use. Rezone from residential, no, from commercial to residential.
No, from transitional.
Oh, transitional to commercial.
Okay, whereas, this is the one that was sent back to committee last month, okay? So, that's why it's got a different resolution number on your agendas, anyway. Whereas Melanie M. Lepine, landowner, Melanie M. Lepine and Alan Lepine petitioner, Osseo, Wisconsin, have requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Sumner for the purpose of dividing it to put up storage units and make residential lots. Whereas the rezone is on approximately thirteen point nine-one acres, more or less, and whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to section fifty-nine point sixty-nine, parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes, whereas the town of Sumner supports the request, is rezone request, whereas Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from transitional agriculture, TA, to commercial C and residential twenty, R twenty, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated, introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Kellen Nelson, David Larson, Randy Severson, Stacy Klein, Andrew Todd, Don Waldera, Anthony Munson. Motion to approve.
What, by Mr. Larson to approve?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Todd. I don't see Mike here as...
He will.
Oh!
Burgess here.
Burgess is doing it. Okay, Burgess, you want to come up just in case there's some questions?
He was out there in the hall. Good morning, I'm Virg Gamra. I'm a zoning technician in the Department of Land Management. This will seem like light work to you compared to what you've been listening to this morning. So do you have any questions for me on this rezone?
Was there any opposition to it at all?
This was brought back to the committee because there were some technical difficulties when we were in our meeting. There was an email sent early in the morning to me, which I did not catch. Then also, the IT department changed the phone number that morning. And that gentleman was trying to call in and was unable to get in on the phone. So at our Environment and Land Use Committee, when this was sent back to the committee, they did talk to this gentleman and addressed his concerns. One of it was about the road, Van Tassel Road, which we sent back to the, we told him that his concern had to go to the town because that was out of our jurisdiction. The other concern was about some flooding on the property. And so we addressed his concerns. He seemed to be fine with that. And Kellen or anyone else on our committee can verify that. And therefore, it passed and it is back before you today.
No other concerns, we'll just call for the vote.
Well, you answered my question. I just wanted to make sure his concerns were listened to and that he felt comfortable after you all talked to him in the meeting and everything's okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, call or roll.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Nelson, why does that say that?
It's not David Nelson.
We have a misprint on our tally sheet.
Did you get, did you get married and change your name?
As far as I'm aware of it. Well, I changed Nelson to Larson. David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yeah.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero. We've got 17 of those ballots, so we've got to get one fixed here. So far, well, it might come back in our next 17.
Hey, second one is rural residential to commercial, Town of Pigeon.
Whereas, whereas Mervin E. and Fanny I. Miller, landowner, Mervin Miller, petitioner, Whitehall, Wisconsin, have requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Pigeon to erect a building for a rafter manufacturing business. And whereas the rezone is on approximately three acres, more or less. Whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to Section 59.69, parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the town of Pigeon supports the rezone request. Whereas Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from rural residential, RR, to commercial, C. And it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated, introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Kellen Nelson, David Larson, Randy Severson, Stacy Klein, Andrew Todd, Don Waldera, Anthony Munson.
First by Ms. Klein, seconded by Ms. Turner. Explain that one again.
Well, this one is north of Whitehall, between Whitehall and Pigeon on Highway 53 and 121. The gentleman is actually moving Green Line Trust business from another location to this location. And we felt that since precedent had been set on the previous location, that we should continue that zoning on this parcel. The only concern we had was from a landowner. He was concerned about the driveways on the state highway and that there's a slight curve there. I was in touch with the Department of Transportation, and they had met with Mr. Miller. And Mr. Miller agreed to only have one access off of Highway 53. And the north of the driveway on that property would be removed. And he is using only one driveway for everything. And that was the only concern we had.
Okay, call or roll. I know it was an improvement for the rafter place due to the, they don't have to worry about road banding anymore. That's one of the reasons this has happened.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Seventeen, zero.
Okay, next one's a rezone from exclusive ag to commercial in Town of Sumner.
Whereas T. and J. Storage LLC, landowner, John Tina Severson, petitioner, Osseo, Wisconsin, have requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Sumner for the purpose of building mini storage units. And whereas the rezone is on approximately two acres, more or less. And whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to Section 59.69, parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the town of Sumner supports the rezone request. And whereas the Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from exclusive agriculture, two, EA2, to commercial, C. And it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated, introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Kellen Nelson, David Larson, Randy Severson, Stacy Klein, Andrew Todd, Don Waldera, Anthony Munson. Move to approve.
First by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Todd. Okay, explain this one.
Okay. I should note that the first, the Lapine rezone was on the east side of Interstate 94. This one is on the west side of Interstate 94 and north of County Road Double N. And again, they want to rezone for storage units. And the grade in elevation is why he wants to locate it where it is because he's only using part of his parcel. But we had no opposition to this rezone.
Okay. Call or roll?
Sure. Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Seventeen, zero.
One more rezone, residential 20 to commercial in Town of Tremplow.
Whereas Whole Toad LLC, landowner, Andrew J. Todd, petitioner, Arcadia, Wisconsin, have requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Tremplow for the purpose of making the zoning on this lot uniform with this current commercial business in order to facilitate vehicle parking. And whereas the rezone is on approximately 2.07 acres, more or less. And whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to Section 59.69, parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the town of Tremplow supports the rezone request. And whereas the Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from residential 20, R20, to commercial, C. And it appears the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated, introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Kellen Nelson, David Larson, Randy Severson, Stacy Klein, Andrew Todd abstained, Don Waldera, and Anthony Munson. A motion to approve.
Second. motion by Ms. Waldera, I think.
Yep.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Explain this one.
Okay. As noted, this is for Andy Todd, who is part of your board. This lot is located, the 2.07 acres is located directly north of Toad's Cove, which is Mr. Todd's business. And there is no driveway to get to it. And he'd like to rezone it so that he could use it for additional parking for his business. And he also went around to all the adjoining neighbors and got signatures of approval. And there was no opposition present at the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Call or roll?
I'll take note, abstaining from this vote. I already wrote it down on here. So when I got, I was going to get to you, yes. Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd abstained. And Emery Palmer?
Yes.
Sixteen, oh, and one abstained. Oh, okay.
Next one comes from Personnel Bargaining and Executive Finance for a new position in the custodial department. Doesn't start immediately, but it's going to get somebody trained for this fall, basically, so.
Whereas the current staffing levels in the maintenance department for custodial duties will be inadequate once the new justice center opens. Whereas an additional custodial position will be required to ensure proper coverage and level of service due to the new justice center. Whereas in anticipation of the justice center opening in the fall of 2023, this new position would go into effect in September 2023. And whereas, as set forth in the attached project initiation form, this position would increase the maintenance department budget by $22,000 for the remainder of 2023. Whereas it is in the best interest of Tremplow County to create a new custodial position within the maintenance department to ensure proper coverage and service. Now be it resolved that the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the creation of a new custodial position in the maintenance department effective September 2023. And be it further resolved that the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors authorizes $22,000 be transferred from the general fund to the maintenance department as follows. Do they have the new resolution or the? Well, we'll find out when we start reading here. Okay. As follows, $12,748 in line item 101.5160111, which is wages. $790.38 in line item 101.51600.151, which is social security. $828.62 in line item 101.51600.152, which is retirement. $184.85 in line item 101.51600.153, which is Medicare. And $7,448.15 in line item 101.51600.154, which is health insurance. Co-introduced by Personnel Bargaining Committee, Kellen Nelson, Ron Johnson, Emery Palmer, Jeannie Nutter, John Austin. And co-introduced by Executive Finance Committee, David Larson, David Orsh, Bridget Turner, John Austin, Richard Sasha. Go for approval.
Second.
First by Mr. Johnson, and second by Ms. Turner. Yes, you got a question?
Yeah, I do. I understand that the dollars for health insurance are outlined to be moved. But it is possible that an employee would not take the health insurance. So is there a plan for?
It could be less than that too, if they're single or whatever. But Jeremy, is there, you want to explain it?
So the way that that would work, from what I understand, is anything that's not spent is returned to the general fund at the end of the year. So if I'm taking the maximum, because if they choose to go family plan, I need to have that money. But if they go single or they choose not to accept it, then that money would roll back into the general fund at the end of the year. But I'm just planning the most expensive case scenario.
Is that, is that common practice? That anything that is in a resolution that isn't spent rolls automatically back to the general fund?
Fund spent.
It does not need to be stated? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Call or roll?
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson. Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams. Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Seventeen zero.
Next one accounts from Education, or Extension and Education Communication Committee, there must be restricted non-lapsing funds.
Whereas UW Madison Division of Extension, Tremplow County would like accounts updated for youth education. Whereas this money is intended to support county educators in their work with residents involved in the youth education. Now be it resolved that Tremplow County accepts this update and that money be deposited in revenue accounts 101.46774, Youth Education, and expense account 101.55650.348, Youth Education, as a non-lapsing account, introduced by Extension Education and Communication Committee, Andy Todd, Richard Sasha, Dawn Waldera.
Motion to approve.
Urged by Ms. Turner.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Klein. There's no dollar amount in there. Do you have any?
No, what, what'll happen here now is going forward in 2023, any monies that come in for youth education will be put into non-lapsing. So it's something that I have to keep track of every year.
So there's no set amount? It could just keep increasing? Okay.
It could, but they're gonna spend it. I hope you're gonna spend it.
It'll get spent.
Okay. Call the roll.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Dawn Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
This one's similar. It's for the Community Garden Non-Lapsing Account.
Same, kinda same basis here. Whereas UW Madison Division of Extension, Tremplow County would like accounts updated for Community Garden. Whereas this money is intended to support county educators in their work with residents involved in the Community Garden. Now be it resolved that Tremplow County accepts this update and that money be deposited in revenue account 101.46767, Community Garden, and expense account 101.55625.348, Community Garden, as a non-lapsing account, introduced by Extension Education Committee, Andy Todd, Richard Sasha, Dawn Waldera.
Okay. Urged by Ms. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Todd. It is self-explanatory. No discussion. We'll just go with a roll call.
Dawn Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Okay, Audit Committee.
Whereas the Audit Committee has audited the following claims and recommend that they be allowed as follows. John Austin, $1,481.65. Kevin Adams, $258.95. Robert Becker, $273.58. Emery Palmer is zero. Ron Johnson is zero. Stacy Klein, $770.73. David Larson, $1,237.32. Dick Miller, $181.44. Kellen Nelson, $1,018.82. Jeanie Nutter, $460.4. David Orsh, $276.20. Richard Sasha, $168.12. Dan Schreiner, $609.84. Lori Severson, $81.44. Andy Todd, zero. Bridget Turner, $325.76. Dawn Waldera, $295.85. Total per diem's, $5,550. Total expenses, $1,889.74. Grand total, $7,439.74. Now be it resolved that the claims be allowed as shown, introduced by Audit Committee, David Larson, Dick Miller, David Orsh.
Urged by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Turner. I'll call the roll on this one.
There's no questions? Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emery Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Dawn Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Five percent of announcements and elections. I have an appointment here for a citizen member to serve on the Veteran Service Board. I think you have a copy of it in your deal. Robert Rasperson from Oliva. He's, I think he's in the garden or something, isn't he? Anyway, you do have a copy of it, so I'm looking.
Everybody's got a copy.
Looking for approval of this.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Urged by Nutter, seconded by Ms. Waldera. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Paused. Alex Carey. Election of a member to the Healthcare Center. Now, this is an elected member from this board. So, looking for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Dick Miller.
Dick Miller's been nominated.
She's already on.
She's been on twice.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Dawn Waldera.
Okay. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Bearing none, declared nomination is close with two candidates, Mr. Miller and Ms. Waldera.
Appoint some.
Uh, let's see. How about Ron Johnson?
Somebody over on this.
And Stacy, you can.
Nice and close.
Yeah. Why don't you say? I'll take.
You keep one. I might not give him the right.
Oh.
Well, did I understand, Stacy, that you had a recommendation for?
The letter is there. Maybe Stacy wants to read the letter.
Yeah, so, yeah, Jerry just mentioned that, and I guess both of us were gonna nominate Dick Miller, so.
I think both candidates are very well qualified, so.
So you're going tomorrow.
I have another meeting tomorrow.
Going where?
We'll talk afterward.
Let's talk afterward.
Oh. Oh, that's for that steering committee?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just got a quick question. Paul, how come we gotta sign our name to them now? We never did before.
The only one you don't sign is for County Board Chair.
Correct.
Everything else you have to sign your name.
Hmm.
If you don't sign your name, the vote won't count.
When we elected.
They have to sign.
Then your vote won't count.
They did, because it was on a big sheet of paper last time.
Did you say if they don't sign it, it don't count?
Right. Uh-oh.
Yeah, you're like.
Here. Yeah.
Do you want a piece of paper?
Yeah, here you need.
Give him, give him one of those.
Here's a.
A tablet that you can.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and just put them into the.
We'll make sure this is legal. We don't wanna. You're running these through a Dominion machine?
If you've got one, I will. They were all signed. Seven.
There's ten here.
That was a bad zero.
They can figure it out with the math.
I thought there was people talking about that they hadn't signed them.
Bridget was the only one.
Oh, okay.
But I had hers like on the bottom, so you got her signature.
You want me to read?
The clerk will read the official total.
Dick Miller, ten. Waldera, seven.
Hey.
One thing.
Yes.
I'm just gonna note that typically the meetings are the first Wednesday of every month, but in May, it's gonna be Tuesday, May ninth, and the location will be announced before then.
That isn't gonna be at the Healthcare Center?
No, we've been rotating to their different facilities.
Oh, oh, okay.
So I think they might try their Arcadia location, but Jerry will let us know for sure.
Okay. So the committee is aware of that. Everybody but Dick, I suppose. Okay. Okay, thank you. The next appoint, appoint citizens to the Environmental Land Use Committee. And actually, I think these can both go at once. Both were, both of these, Randy Severson as a livestock representative in twenty months, and as a Town of Unity Board Member.
Town Rep, yep.
As a Town Representative. Both were recommended by the Land Use Committee, so I would.
Hold. Mr. Chair.
Oh, once a different amount of time?
Nope.
No, they're both two years.
They're both two years. We would like to hold back the appointment of Tony Munson and wait until the Town's Association is able to meet at the end of this month. Out of respect to them, I do know there are two potential candidates, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We feel like we should wait for their.
Well, I'll rephrase that. We're just voting for the Randy Severson. Okay. Motion made second to appoint Randy Severson to the Land Use Committee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's great. We'll hold off on twenty months until after the Town's recommendation. And then I see we have Lori Severson, announcement on a fundraiser.
Turn your, turn your mic on.
Yeah.
Turn your, there you go. No, now you just turned it off.
There you go.
There we go. All right, awesome. We have, for the last three years, Champions Riverside Resort has done the Tremplow Canine and Drug Education Program fundraiser for Tremplow County. This'll be our third year, so we're excited about that. We've raised various amounts, started the first year with very close to $20,000, and then last year it was lower than that. So we're hoping for thirty is our, our all-time goal. So we wanted to know if all of you would be willing to help us out by either putting up these flyers anywhere that you can, doing whatever you can. If you wanna bring a basket, if you wanna participate in a live auction. We'll have some Packer players there. We've got all the campgrounds in the area involved, so any of you guys that would be willing to pass these handy-dandy little fundraiser things out for us. And we also have a letter, if you know somebody that might be willing to give us a donation or a basket or that type of thing. You have that. We have, we are running it through the Gilbert Brown Foundation, so it's a 501(c)(3). And we have our handy-dandy little raffle license printed right out there. So, it is, when is it? It is May nineteenth, which is also Hero's Weekend. So, yeah, so it's coming right up, so.
May nineteenth?
Yes. Where it is going to be sunny, eighty, a hundred degrees. Oh, I'm sorry, the twentieth. Twentieth.
It's the twentieth?
Yep, it's the twentieth. Yep. We start on Friday, the nineteenth, doing some stuff, but twentieth is a big day. They do a walk-run, a chicken queue. You can buy a t-shirt with a dog on it, whatever you like. So anything that you can do to help, we would appreciate it. And I've got hundreds of little flyers for you to just paste all over your neighborhood. Appreciate it. Sending them around for folks? Yes, I'll be happy to send them around. Send them both ways. You can meet in the middle. Yep, if you, yep, if you wanna donate something, you can just, absolutely. Yep, yep, it's that, yeah, whatever you, whatever you like to do. The sheriff actually brings, brings the dog out and, you know, they can, the kids have a little drug education type of thing there. And, and all of y'all are welcome to come on out. We always do, we always do for any of the law enforcement that, that would, that comes and donates their time and that kind of thing. We offer them to freeze, to stay free. If any of you guys wanna come and spend the weekend with us, please feel free to just.
Few steps.
Text me or call me and email me and come on over.
You were focused.
So we would love to, love to have you. And then I guess I'll pass these around as well, if anybody wants to take these. This is just the official form with the E I N number on it and all the legal stuff, so that Rick doesn't put us in jail ever. Little, little things like, little things like that.
Okay.
We're at number eight.
Okay, Committee Report, the Execs Finance, Budget, Tax Fund Update.
They were all mailed out to you and also in your packets, so.
I don't think I had it. No, I didn't.
Yep, they went.
I don't have it.
Because I was so happy I had them done. Everybody else got them in your packets?
Yes.
Oh, yours is special. You might. To be honest.
Does one look like this, and in the two-sided general fund and sales tax?
I didn't get it.
The rest did, but I don't think he did, to be honest. His got all mixed up.
He loses things a lot.
I don't know. Was it in the packet I had? I don't know.
There's also on the packet that went out on.
The computer.
On the computer.
Here's this.
What is this one out?
It's just, just the Gilbert Brown Foundation. It shows it's a 503(c) or 50, 50, yeah, whatever.
Whatever. Okay.
The one that gets a raffle license.
Ready for the next one?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, letter from Governor Evers, correspondence.
It's actually from the Office of Governor Evers. It says, "Thank you so much for taking the time to share Tremplow County's resolution requesting the state to revise the current real estate transfer fees revenue sharing formula with the governor. Unfortunately, the real estate transfer fee was not included in the governor's executive 2023-25 biannual budget. However, the governor did include an increase to shared revenue, which will increase every municipality and county's aid in the state. The governor proposed sending twenty percent of the state's sales tax revenue back to local communities for shared revenue. This is more than half a billion dollars more a year in new resources to invest in key priorities and challenges facing communities. This increase will also ensure that the appropriation will grow as future sales tax collections grow. Additionally, the governor has proposed that after these funds are distributed to existing revenue, shared revenue programs, the remaining funds will be divided between public safety, aid, and general aid to municipalities and counties. Aid for public safety will total $250 million and can be used to support law enforcement, fire, EMS, courts, and district attorney's offices. The remaining funds will be distributed as general aid allocated to municipalities and counties. Under this proposal, every municipality in Wisconsin will see an increase in aid from the state. Again, thank you for contacting the governor. Please do not hesitate to reach